We're on record. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-SECT of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. We'll move into the roll call. Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Kroos is not here. Mr. Joskowitz?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Ready?
Present.
Chairwoman Grignani?
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz?
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
This meeting is open to the public. If you have any item that you'd like to present to us that is not on the agenda this evening, I see none. Nora, the resolutions, please. Uh, I'm going, uh, I'll do the correspondence first. Correspondence received from Joseph O'Neill, attorney from Garofalo O'Neill, request and application 2466, 13 Beverwick, North Beverwick Road, block 611, lot 6. Be carried to July 9th, 2025 without further notice and grant the board an extension of time to make decision on the application through July 31st, 2025. And resolutions. Um, everybody except Joskowitz, uh, can, we could do all these resolutions, you know, under one motion and second. Application 2474 CAT 15 Colonial Terrace, block 759, lot 13. Application 2459 Patel, uh, 93 Troy Meadow Road, uh, block 763, lot 1901, and application 2515 Day Pitney, 8 Sylvan, block 202, lot 1.11. Um, can I have a motion?
I move all three mo, uh, resolutions.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willen? Oh, he's not here. Grignani?
Yes. Thank you, Nora. Well, application 2435, we will be dismissing due to the application failure to submit revised plans and lack of communication with the township regarding status of submission.
So moved.
Second.
Is there anybody here on that?
Nope.
Yeah.
And Nora, you told them about that we were gonna put it on tonight's calendar?
I sent them an email. They didn't respond to anything.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay. Application 24-
You had a mo, motion and a second?
Motion and a second.
Second dismissal.
I did the motion. I seconded it.
Okay, then we need a roll call on that one.
Roll call, please. Yes. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Application 2502, Mr. Vedi?
Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Wait, just state your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Sudarshan Vedi. My last name is Vadi, V-A-D-D-I. Uh, I'm the, uh, this is, I'm the, this is, I'm the property owner, and I've been living here for the past 15 years with my wife and two kids.
Could you please pull the microphone closer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to present my case, myself here. And, uh, so, so this is how it happened. Like, I live, wherever I live, this property, uh, behind, in my backyard, there is like, uh, you know, that hill, that's a strip mall. So a lot of water used to come all the time, so that, uh, my basement gets like a drive, and like, uh, no wet walls and, uh, uh, no flooring also sometimes get wet.
I'm sorry, can you pull the microphone closer?
Yeah, we can. You gotta speak up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Now it's good.
Thank you.
Close, yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
So-
Excellent.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, so I, I saw my neighbor putting like, uh, I don't know, like a big rubber pipes from, uh, the, uh, the gutters to the, I mean, to the property to the street. And I asked him, so he said like, that gonna help, uh, some of the water can go, uh, not go into the basement, uh, so it can go out. So I went to the Home Depot, and I bumped into this guy, this contractor. Uh, he said, uh, I mean, he said, this is just waste of time and waste of money putting the pipes. He suggested me to put like, uh, sidewalks all around. Uh, he said that's a permanent solution and it's not cost much. I said, okay, fine, can you help? So that gentleman helped me, uh, to put the sidewalks, but I didn't realize that I had to take the permission first to do that stuff, you know? So then, uh, I, I also like, I want, my dad turned 80 last year, so they're in India. So I want, uh, to invite my parents, uh, for a short visit to have some kind of get together and celebrate his, uh, 80th birthday, some things like that. So because my, my backyard is pretty much, it's, uh, because of all this water and, uh, mud and all this, it's not like, uh, uh, you know, not functional, 100%. So, I mean, actually, my dad, my parents, they came like 10 years back once, visited me once, but they didn't like it here, to be honest with you, especially my mom, because I, I work for the city of New York, I'm in cybersecurity, I'm the chief information secretary officer there. And my wife goes to, uh, like, a substitute teacher here in this town. My two kids also go to school. So my parents, they used to live by themselves and, uh, just in the house. They can't even get out, you know? So, so then I was thinking, I thought like, you know, put like a fence and, you know, make some part of that, uh, my backyard, like a walkable and, you know, uh, go there and, uh, like in the sun kind of thing. So that's how I put like a, I asked the guy same right to help me with the pavers and, uh, you know, uh, and also for privacy and security, they put a fence. I never had fence before. So that's how I ended up doing all this. Uh, and I mean, at that time, there's a gazebo was on like a sale. It's a-
Ready-made gazebo, you know?
Uh, so just, it's a kit, uh, so I brought that kit and the same, same person helped me to set it up. So without realizing, I ended up doing all this, uh, without getting any permission from-
That's why you're here this evening?
Not exactly.
All the work is done.
Yeah, not exactly that. So when, when it's, everything is done, and then I realized that I had to take the permission. So I approached zoning department and beautiful people, building and engineering department. So everything, I, they asked me to do like a resurvey of my property, which I did again. So everything was done. I mean, we were almost at the end of the paperwork. Then we realized that I went over like, you know, 4.2% of uh, coverage area. It's supposed to be 30, 30%, I guess. And I was, uh, zoning called me that I'm at 34.2. Uh, so, uh, they asked me, that's the reason I'm here, to take that variance, you know? So, yeah, I mean, I know that's a, I preach, uh, this every day, like, you know, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. Uh, that's my part of my job. I preach that every day, but unfortunately, I'm also into this awkward situation today. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever, uh, zoning, engineering, and building people they want to do. Actually, engineering people, they visited my site, and, uh, they suggested, they recommended one dry well, uh, pit. Uh, they showed me the location also, because it's a small house, a 1,220 square foot, but my, my area is almost like a point four acres, uh, that, you know, my whole lot. So, yeah.
This says a three-season room addition, addition-
Yes, sir.
And a gazebo.
Yes, sir.
So you did both?
Yes, sir.
You didn't say anything about the-
Oh, that's what I'm trying to, that's, uh, I'm sorry.
Have you built the three-season room?
No, that is also part of that, came in like a ready-made kit. Uh-
Say that again?
It's, it's a ready-made kit, you know, so that-
So you have built it?
Yeah, so they-
So-
That guy contractor, whoever was helping me with this, uh, pavers-
How did you wind up, how did, if you never got permits, how did you get in front of the building department?
I'm sorry, sir.
If you never got a permit to do any of this, how did you wind up in front of the building department?
No, actually, I've, I've, some, zoning called me. They sent me a letter, zoning department.
They caught you putting up the three-season room?
No, no, that, it looks like somebody, uh, mentioned or complained or whatever it is that-
It's a code enforcement case.
Yeah, that's a-
Somebody made an inspection.
Yeah, somebody made, probably somebody.
But an inspection generally because somebody-
It was done by the zoning department, not construction.
Like, was somebody complaining?
Yes, it was code enforcement.
Maybe.
Yes.
Probably a neighbor.
Yeah, possibly the zoning people. That, that's what I was told, they go on this account.
We had a number of these cases recently where this coverage is over, and we have letters from the town engineer saying that drainage is issue, an issue.
Yes, sir.
Have you seen that letter?
Yes, sir. So that's why-
Have you spoken to the town engineer?
Yes, sir. That's why Nora man pointed me to go to the engineering department first.
And you've done that?
I, I've done that, and-
And you agree with what he recommended?
They also visited my site in, in person. Somebody, some engineer came to visit my site.
Okay, so you know what you're getting into and you agree with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have any questions from the board? Any questions on the left, sir? Gentlemen?
Well, so do you, do you have neighbors on either side of you?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do you have a neighbor on both sides of you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did they have, they know what's going on now?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah.
Okay. Did they have water before this problem? Do they have water going to them after?
No, no, it's always, it was a problem. It, it's been a problem forever.
Both houses always had, all three houses have had water problems in the past?
I'm, I'm not, it's not like a water, like, you know, like, like a river kind of thing. It's all, mostly, it's like, uh, you know, it's like a wet ground kind of stuff. Yeah.
And your neighbors were notified of tonight's events?
Yes, sir.
So basically, you agree with the engineering department proposal?
Yes, sir.
You're going to be in compliance to that?
A hundred percent, I'll be in compliance with that. Yes, sir. Whatever the outcome are, yeah. I mean, actually, they already recommended, so I'm okay with that. So I know what, what I'm dealing with here.
So you are mitigating the-
Yeah, well, one dry well, yes.
Good.
And I also look for that person who is like expert in doing dry wells, uh, so he agreed to do it. Yeah.
Yeah, better go with the experts.
Yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions of this witness and his testimony only? I see none. Do we have any other questions from our board members?
Uh, I got a question. I had, you said patio's pavers?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything between the pavers?
N, nothing, sir. Just pavers, uh, attached each other. I mean, there's no cement, nothing.
So water seeps through?
Yeah, exactly. Water goes into the ground. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, those pavers were meant for only just, for, I, that's only my thinking. My parents, they can walk instead of like a dirt, they can walk on something like, you know, smooth surface. Yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience that has objections or support of this applicant? I see none.
Yeah, what about the retaining wall and all the other stuff?
That's, uh, because, you know, it's only like, uh, probably like, uh, maybe like six feet, because, uh, my backyard is like, you know, that, whatever, that Big Check Plaza, that, they're on the hill. So just, just to have that, 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 that dirt always comes, comes down. So it, it just, I put like, you know, it's a retention wall, whatever they call it. Yeah. It's not too high, like, uh, maybe like four feet high, I guess. Yeah.
Well, that is, four feet high is when you need a permit.
I, I don't even, yeah, I, I guess so. Yeah, whatever, whatever it takes, I'm okay to do it. Yeah.
An old member of ours would have taken you out to the woodshed because you're asking for permission. You're asking for, uh, forgiveness instead of asking for permission.
I'm really sorry for the inconvenience. Yeah, but unfortunately, yes, that's what it is. And at, at one point, even I, I was thinking of like, you know, uh, like take out the pavers and go back to my regular, uh, uh, non-coverage, whatever it is. But I was told like, you know, even if I take out the pavers, the, originally, whatever the, the way it was designed, it's already like, you know, maybe like point five or even before I brought the house, uh, it was already over the coverage. So, uh, they have, zoning said it's not gonna help much. That's it. The only, uh, lifesavers are you guys. That's what they said.
I got a very feeling about this. Board member would like to frame a resolution, please?
Let me do it. Application 25:02, Sudarshan Vedi, Vadi, 100 Hillside Terrace, block 387, lot, lot number five, zone R3, to grant a C variance to legalize three-seasons room addition, trench side, rare walk, and concrete area, uh, left side and rare concrete area, gazebo, paver patio, paver walk, and four five, and five-foot-high wall contrary to section 430-35, column eight and 13, section 430-11A wall, section 430-11A, trench section 430-275H, and section 430-275, and in compliance with the engineering report, engineering recommendation-
Yes, sir.
And with a professional guy-
Yes, sir.
Who do the job. So many sections, uh, first time I'm reading.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Berkowitz?
Second, Berkowitz.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
I'm gonna abstain. I could abstain, right?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain. I could abstain, right?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Thank you, ma'am.
And you can go to the zoning board to pick up your permits.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm really sorry for the inconvenience and thank you so much for your time.
Well, you've learned that you have to get permits now.
Yes, I, now I know. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening. Okay. Application 2503. This application will be carried to the July 9th, 2025 with publication only and grants the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Your application is approved. We will be, uh, having the resolution at our next meeting, and at that time, you will receive a letter-
Okay. Thank you, Nora. May we have a new date, please? July 23rd. And we do not have to renotice?
You're going to give the board extensions to make a decision through that date, correct? And you're not going to have to send renotice? Are you here about this application? Just give us one second, okay? So you want us to, you want the board to carry until July 23rd?
Yes.
And you're giving the board all extensions?
Yes.
To make their decision, and the board is not going to have to renotice it?
Okay.
You're not going to have to renotice, okay?
Okay.
Is everyone in favor of that?
Is anyone in favor?
Yes.
The gentleman is there.
Yeah, I understand. Sir, you can come forward.
Sir, do you want to come forward, please? Do you want to give him one of the microphones?
So this application is being carried or adjourned to another date, July 23rd of 2025. If you have any comments that you want to make either in support of, or in opposition to the application, or any questions you want to ask, you can do that on July 23rd.
So I can't.
Well, they're coming back, potentially with some additional information for the board.
I don't know that I'm going to be in the area in the state on July 23rd. And I'll just make a quick, which is already addressed, I am at number block 15, I can be behind number 86, and I spoke to the neighbors on both sides.
Speak into the microphone.
We don't know that.
Okay, well, let's disregard.
Just give us your testimony, sir.
Okay, hold on. If you're going to speak either in opposition or in favor of the application, I need to swear yeah. So can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
But why is he getting to talk about the case when there's nothing presented?
Because he may not be here on the date.
Are we allowed to do that?
Well, it's not conventional, but if you want to hear from him, you can.
It's just, it's just an issue of what's already been discussed.
Sir, please start again. There was talk among the board.
Tell the board your name and your address.
Okay, I'm Dr. Bob Di Benedetto, 13 Chesapeake Avenue.
Spell your last name.
Lake Hiawatha, D-I capital B-E-N-E-D-E-T-T-O.
And what was your address?
13 Chesapeake Avenue, Lake Hiawatha.
And can you not come back on the July 23rd date?
I don't believe I can. It's unlikely.
And why is that?
Because we haven't planned to, my wife is talking about going on vacation, and that's the only time that we have.
Okay, do you understand that the board is not hearing the application tonight?
Right.
And they've carried the application until July 23rd?
Just asking to make a statement of a concern, and it's all about the drainage, because we're down at the bottom also, and there are drains in the property, I know now.
Can you speak into the microphone? Pull it closer.
So our only concern is that drainage be maintained carefully, otherwise it will back up into not only our yard, but the yard behind, yards to the left. So I'm sure this has been thought of, but you brought it up right away. That's our only concern.
Okay, so as you heard, the township engineer wrote a memo, and the applicant is going to have some additional conversations with the township engineer to address just that issue, okay?
That's all I came to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Di Benedetto. Okay. All right, we'll see you in July.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application number 2327, 328 Kingston LLC, 328 Kingston Road, Block 211, Lot 11, Zone R4, a D variance for a three-family dwelling.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Really close, right?
Really close.
Really close, I'm looking.
Yeah, sure, you can start.
Good evening, my name is Ursula Laleo. I am an attorney with Laddie Clark &amp; Ryan, here representing 328 Kingston LLC. I have with me tonight our engineer, Mike Fisher, from Walker, I'm sorry, Dykstra Walker, and also we have Allison Kopsko, who is a planner with Jessica Caldwell. So that'll be the testimony here before us tonight. This is an existing, it's a residence, it's an existing two-family residence, and we have what's admittedly a terrible copy of a certificate of occupancy about the two-family residence. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming use located at this Kingston Road property. What we're here tonight is seeking relief to have a one-bedroom apartment added on the basement level, so it would become a three-family. No changes to parking, no changes to the interior, so that's what we're here for tonight. So that, of course, triggers a D variance. There's also some pre-existing non-conforming C or bulk variances related to things like the fence, the parking, because of the additional apartment also. There's also utility questions, there's an existing accessory building, and again, no changes to that. We do have our report from the board engineer and the board planner, and I thank you both for your patience through that series of plans. That was a little painful, I'm sorry, but I think we got to the point where we have a good engineer on board who can walk us through the current existing, the current and existing conditions on the property, as well as our proposal.
Okay, great. Before you get started with the testimony, just an initial question, D1 or D2?
D2.
You think it's, you really think it's an expansion of an existing non-conforming, rather than a completely new use? You're going from a non-conforming two-family to what this town's ordinance defines as a multi-family. I think you're more of a D1.
I defer to you as the board attorney, and I think our proofs are the same essentially, just obviously a different height and a little bit more, but I think if you think that, I think you'll hear the same testimony from our planner.
So that's, that's my opinion, that you're a D1. And because of that, I took a look at your notes. It's, I'd say it's close, it's probably okay, but I'll leave it up to you as to whether you want to proceed.
Sorry.
I'm going to just read the relevant section in it, okay? It says, "Requesting a quote D/use variance relief approval to allow interior renovations for the expansion of a pre-existing two-family residence to a three-family residence unit where only one-family residences are permitted." So it's close, I'll defer to you if you want to move forward, understanding that somebody higher than me may disagree about your notice, but...
Understood, and I appreciate you bringing up. I do think that it's sufficient, particularly because it doesn't say D2 or 1.
It doesn't say D2, you're correct.
So I do think it's sufficient, and I understand if someone else challenges that, but I think, given that we specify exactly two-family, three-family, one, I think there's enough in there that we're okay. And of course, we put in that catch-all clause also.
Yep, okay, I just wanted to bring out your attention.
I appreciate that.
And put it on the record before we move forward.
Thank you. So we'll start our testimony tonight with Mr. Fisher. Would you like to swear him in?
Yes. You raise your right hand, please. You swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
Michael Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R.
Great, and make sure the microphone is nice and close.
Mr. Fisher, can you tell the board about your engineering experience, please?
Certainly. I graduated, I went, attended NJIT, graduated 2011 with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I sat for and passed the state engineering exam, licensing exam in 2014, and since then, my engineering license has been in good standing in the state.
And have you testified before other boards in New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
And you've been accepted as a engineer in those boards?
Yes, I have.
We'd offer him as our engineering expert tonight.
Acceptable.
Thank you. Can you please walk us over, so we have, I assume that's a copy of the plan, that's the same, that's before the board with no changes?
That's correct. The only difference between what's on this board right now and what was before them is a slight colored variation. I attempted to highlight the four parking spaces in the driveway as being read, although I believe that that's a failed attempt, as I assume the board members at the far end probably can't tell the difference in the colors at this point. Nonetheless, there are big dashed rectangular areas representing vehicle spaces in the driveway. That is the only difference.
Would you like us to mark that as Exhibit 1, then?
I suppose so, just to be on the same side.
Thank you.
And you know what? We should probably put also on the record that you indicated to me earlier today that your client is not here tonight, could not be here tonight, and it indicated to you that if the board had any questions of your client, that we would need to come back another date for them to ask those questions.
Understood.
And that's okay with you?
Thank you.
Great. Okay, sir.
Okay, so we've marked Exhibit A1, and can you explain to us the plan for this, please?
Certainly. So it's a two-story dwelling on the property. Building has existed since roughly the 1950s on this property. There is a paved driveway on the, across the frontage, access off of Kingston Road. It's a fully developed piece of property at this point in time in a residential neighborhood. It's in the R10 zone, I believe, I'm sorry, R4 zone. There's front access to the proper, to the house off of Kingston with a public sidewalk across the frontage. Property is serviced by water, sewer, and electric and gas.
And you also have, I think it's helpful for the board to look at a copy of the architectural plans with you tonight?
Yes.
And I believe this one is exactly the same as what was presented to the board in the application package, yes?
I believe so. Want to mark the C2?
Please.
Jordan.
And is A2 a copy of the architectural plans that we submitted with this application?
Yes, they are.
And can you walk the board through the number of apartments on each floor, please?
Certainly. Under existing conditions, excluding the basement at this point in time, the first floor has a three-bedroom apartment on it.
And that's the yellow in the middle?
Correct. The blue on the right is the second floor that has a two-bedroom apartment on it. There's a mechanical room in the basement currently, and that services the units on the first and second floor.
Okay, and so what we're proposing is in pink, adding that apartment in the basement?
That's correct. It would be effectively a renovation, as I understand it, of that basement level to allow for a one-bedroom apartment in there and still maintain the mechanical room.
Okay, and what section of the code is it we need relief from for this application, then?
There are multiple sections of code that we require relief from. Excuse me. We have a variance for the fence height in the front yard. Say, four-foot-high fence is only allowed in the front yard, we're proposing, or, I'm sorry, nothing is proposed. There currently exists a six-foot-high fence that extends beyond the front of the dwelling into the front yard, so therefore, that's a variance.
No changes?
No changes to the fence are proposed. The previously mentioned use variance is also a source of relief requested. There is also with regards to the fence, a section, Section 430-11B, which states that fences in the front yard must be at least 50% open. The fence that was previously noted, being in the front yard, that's six feet high, is a solid white fence. So therefore, again, no change to it, we're seeking a variance for that. There's additionally a fence variance required, because the fence which was previously installed, was installed closer than 0.5 feet from the property line. Our fence is located approximately 0.2 feet from the property line. Noted that the accessory building we have, oh, thank you, very helpful, thank you. There's a shed at the rear of the lower right-hand corner of the property. It is located closer than six feet off the side yard. Again, existing conditions, it's not been moved, it's not intended to be moved. It's located 2.8 feet, where six is the requirement, off of the rear, same shed, 10-foot is the minimum required, and we're showing it as being 3.4 feet off of that. There are additional variances required for parking.
Before you get to the parking variance, okay? Would your client be willing to mitigate any of the existing C bulk variances, like having to do with the fence, for example, or the accessory building? Has your client thought about perhaps making any modifications that would bring any of those things into compliance?
We have not thought about it, because there's no change, and there haven't been any complaints about any of those, like there's no neighbor saying it's too close, or the fence is wrong. I mean, I can inquire, I don't know that it, like I said, it hasn't been a demand.
I understand.
We'll agree, I know some of the things that were brought up are in the engineer, you know, we'll do the utility that we need to work, and we'll agree to deed restrict that to not in the future increase the bedroom count, things like that, for any changes.
Okay, I just wanted to know if he had thought about that at all.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, continue, please.
Thank you. With regards to the parking, there's both variances that are required from the township, as well as exceptions that are going to be, design exceptions that would be required from the RSIS, because this is now defined as a multi-family building, being it's more than two families, it's more than a duplex, it becomes a multi-family building, and requirements from the RSIS become applicable.
And we did speak to our client about that, and how are we going to help alleviate that condition with parking? We agreed to a deed restriction?
We did, yes. The applicant has indicated that the need for parking for the different units would be addressed by the two-bedroom, second-floor apartment would only be allowed one parking space in the driveway. The three-bedroom, first-floor apartment would only be allowed two parking spaces, and the proposed basement, one-bedroom, would only be allowed one. So that would be the four that we're providing in the driveway.
And we would put that in our leases, and if the board wanted to approve those leases, we would agree to that also, board attorney or engineer.
Our testimony is to whether or not the street can accommodate on-street parking.
Sure.
So, on-street parking, there's signage along Kingston indicating that, I guess, seasonally, if you would, seasonal parking is not permitted in the, when it's, roads are snow-covered. So that is an issue for this property. There is other areas, I frequented the property before I came here, and I did notice quite a few on-street cars parked along Kingston. So people are using it for on-street parking, and my suggestion would be that if the applicant's tenants had company that attended, or came to the, to see them, that they could park on-street. Now, they would not be able to park directly in front of the property, because there's a hydrant in front of the property, but there is, as I said, on-street parking all along Kingston.
Is there any available on-street in front of this property?
No, not directly in front of it.
And there's going to be a total of six bedrooms?
Yes.
And between all the leases, the leases are going to limit the tenants to a total of four spots?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think that's important for the board, I think it's important that we do that, or else, how do you know? But I think it's not uncommon for a two-bedroom to be a one-car family, so I think that's what they're going to have to market to as a condition.
But you could potentially have, you can have six cars servicing six residents of this building.
Well, the RSIS computes to what?
Six.
Let's do it, let's go through the numbers.
Sure.
One-bedroom is what?
Is 1.8.
Two-bedroom is what?
Two.
Three-bedroom?
2.1, so 5.9.
What is it?
2.1.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, you add that up, you get what?
5.9.
Okay, so these six spaces.
Yes.
And you're providing four?
That's correct.
So if Mr. and Mrs. Jones are renting this basement apartment, but Mrs. Jones has to go to TNEP for work, and her husband has to go to Parsippany for work, aren't we using two cars, possibly?
I believe, based on the deed restriction that we are proposing...
They either will have to park on the street, or they'll know...
They would also only be allowed one vehicle.
Right.
How do you do that?
So your deed, the deed restriction you propose is that none of the tenants can collectively own more than the number of vehicles in the deed in the lease?
I don't know if it's a deed restriction as much as a lease.
Lease.
A lease.
So the lease would say, however number of people live here, you collectively can only own one car?
Or two for the first floor.
Or two for the first floor.
And who's going to enforce that?
Well, unfortunately, that's our fund zoning officer for every municipality, and we recognize that, but it is something I've done before, is to have those lease restrictions in order, because there are people who take the public transportation, or who don't have the need for the car, and again, we are being upfront, so it's before someone decides...
You don't have public transportation.
Where they live in town, or one-car household, right? Or Ubers, or Lifts, you know? I understand that is something, again, that we would make sure they have to know beforehand, you don't want someone to sign a lease, and it changes.
The issue is, you have no street parking in front of the property, and the four spaces that you have don't meet any kind of design standard.
Not enough for the existing...
With the driveway, you have a parallel park somehow or other.
Yeah.
It's going to be hazardous. Who is giving, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
The architectural plan, do you know the ceiling height in that basement?
I do not, no. I'm not, I don't have that information available.
The exit capabilities are a stairway and a window well?
I'm sorry?
The exit capabilities are a stairway and a window well?
For the basement, you're referring to?
Yes.
I do believe that it's noted on the basement that the, there's a window that is egress capable, as well as the main access point. So in the far corners, there are egress points.
It's a proposed egress.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's in the bedroom?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you know what's used in the basement now? What the basement's used for now?
Living space. I've seen a picture at least that showed couches, and it's at least finished to that respect.
Who's living, for living space for?
I don't know if it's common space, or, and I think utilities you said are down there also.
Yes, there are utilities.
Are the units occupied? Are the other units occupied?
Yes.
Do you know how many cars those units have?
We spoke with the client today, and understand there's no parking issues now, and I don't know the exact number. I don't, I don't know.
What I would say is, I passed through there before I came to the board hearing this evening, and there were only two vehicles parked in the driveway at this time, for the two families that were there.
May I ask what time you...
Yeah, that man is nothing.
What time you went there? What time you went there?
Fair. It was 6:30.
Who is gonna be the one giving testimony to us justifying why a non-conforming two-family needs to be converted into a super non-conforming three-family?
Our lucky planner tonight has the burden of carrying that testimony. Would you like me to bring her up?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Well, I guess, Mr. Fisher was going through the variances and he didn't really, he touched on RSIS, but there's a couple in there that I think we should put a little, well, there's one there that we should put a little more attention to. requires parking lots to be designed or not induce queues and travel ways. Now, in this case, you have three different residential units, but only two cars can get out at any one time. So there is the potential that a car is gonna be queued in the street letting somebody out.
Yes, I would say that that's a possibility, but I would also say that, again, because there is no on-street parking allowed in front of the dwelling because of the location of the hydrant, that vehicles could temporarily queue along the curbway, curbway.
Well, not only that, but how would that work? You're gonna call your neighbor and say, hey, I need to go to work. Gonna get up and move the car?
Isn't that practical?
That doesn't make any sense to me. Right, sir?
And again, that's, you know, that's, that's what the RSIS is. We also, and there's again, the listing includes, you know, parking within five feet of the property line is not, is required. We're two and a half is proposed. Lighting is proposed by RSIS, which is not proposed.
What about the water and sewer supplies?
Well, that was another question because this, I think you said the house was 40s, 50s-ish? And, you know, you now have three units. And so those services, I would think the services got to be replaced.
So, we had one of the applicant's property maintenance people confirm the diameter of the sewer stack coming out of the property and it's noted on the plans, on the, on the cover sheet. It's a four-inch line coming out. And then based on the TWA regs for flow generation, given all three units, including the proposed one, there would be approximately 675 gallons per day for this building. And it's my understanding that that four-inch pipe at a minimum 0.4%, which is the minimum slope allowed, it would be able to convey that and not reach its capacity.
And I appreciate that that's for TWA treatment works approvals for sewer extensions. Where's the plumbing codes at? Because they're not always the same.
Fair enough. I'd be more than willing to further look into that.
And again, that's gonna have to be something because if we do need to go into the street for a new sewer connection or a new water connection, now we're talking connection details, trench details.
Fair enough. And I believe I did note that in, on the plans as well as in my response letter that should, specifically the water I noted, that because we didn't know what size the water line was, that a test pit could be conducted, assuming the board looked favorably on this application, to confirm the size and if it was deemed to be inadequate for, for the, for the demand for these three units, that the applicant would agree to upgrade the service line coming into the building. Now, obviously for both the sewer and the water. And then we would provide any additional details that would be required.
Okay. And I think if the board is inclined to approve this, we can work some kind of condition. God will save us.
How much do you know about utilities for this? Are there separate utilities, separate boilers, furnace, separate water heaters?
I do. I have some limited information for you on that. I know that there's, there's a water line coming in, a sewer line coming in. There is meters on the outside of the building.
So there's separate electric, you think? After that, you really don't know. Or do you?
There's an electric meter in the front corner. So if you're looking at the property from Kingston, it would be on the front right-hand corner on the side. Just behind that, there's also a gas meter in that location.
Okay.
And then behind that, towards the back corner, is the, the water service line that comes into the building. And that is, that's, from that point then, if you flip to the architectural plans, it shows the services. This is actually upside down in comparison.
It shows mechanical room?
But there's a mechanical room here in the basement.
Right.
With a water heater, a furnace, and then private utilities for that particular tenant, meaning the washer and the dryer. Water, my understanding, a water heater and a furnace would be sufficient to support all three units and it'd just be a zone system.
Joint service?
That's my understanding, yes. And it'd be a zone system.
You're gonna tap another apartment off that, I guess?
Yes.
And everyone, they're not given an individual electric bill or a gas bill?
I, I don't have, I, what I can say is with regards to the electric, that there's a shut-off in each one of the units.
Can you tell us the history when this became a two-family house?
That I could not tell you.
The CO is, I'm sorry, the CO is dated.
The CO, it doesn't give me indication when it was a two-family house.
Well, it's dated 1975. That's all we can provide.
There's a source, you can go back into census files, believe it or not. When was this building built?
In the 50s.
In the 50s? I couldn't find this address for the two-family house.
You couldn't find it as a two-family house?
Yeah. It's their handwritten field census reports who write the names of the people who were living in that house. They're really very interesting.
Sounds fun to search.
They're very interesting because the family sizes are like seven and eight. A lot of kids. Big difference.
So how do we know it's a two-family house?
We know it's a two-family house, but we don't know when it became a two-family house.
Gotcha.
And the township's zoning ordinance is vintage 1954. 54?
Yeah, 54.
So this house was built either when it was zoning or, I don't know.
Looks like just prior. 1950 is the document.
Because you take a look at the house, it looks like it was a regular two-story house and they chopped it up, but.
Don't know when.
I have no idea. And the fact that you only have single utilities considering the structure would say the, wouldn't say anything, just.
I hear your original construction, yeah.
Mr. Lemanowitsch, do you have any other questions?
I'm gonna make a suggestion. I think that you're gonna need the architect here and have some specifics on how this building operates. Because right now, we've got cars lined up in the driveway. That's problematic. We've got maybe joint utilities, maybe not. I don't know what else might arise, but it might be worthwhile to have a better understanding of this building.
Do you know how long your client has owned it?
2009.
Do you think he has any history?
No. Don't, but I can.
You don't think he does?
I don't think so. But we can delve into that further also. I'll see if I can find it. I'm gonna ask you about the census survey and figure that out too.
Mr. Fisher, are you, have you completed your testimony?
I believe so. I mean, I was, I was gonna make my way through the remainder of the parking, but I believe we've touched on the majority of it at this point, so.
Yeah, I think as far as, as far as the site, you know, we've gone through it. You know, the, the issue here from an engineering standpoint is that, you know, this going from a three-bedroom, a two-family to a multi-family is a significant leap. And the municipal agency acknowledges that because with a two-family, you don't need a site plan, capital site plan. But you get into the multi-family, you do need it. RSIS kicks in. So it's, while it seems like it's only one unit, it is a significant leap as far as development standards. But I, I'm guessing that the planner's gonna get into that more than, more than the engineer would.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Fisher on his testimony? Gentleman on the left?
Nope.
Gentleman on the right?
I hear you loud and clear about the concerns of parking and I'm wondering, especially given Mr. Chadwick's request for the, can you hear me?
Yes.
For the architect to be present, that we should wait for the planner then so that we can get all the evidence in and then have the planner wrap it up? I think that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and also I think you need to do some research. I don't think John Chadwick should be researching.
Agreed, yeah. I didn't know that existed.
To support the case. And I'm not certain.
Okay, thank you. Can you show me how to get that field research? That I won't be able to do.
Get all of my secretary, she takes.
All right. So we'd ask to be carried without further notice then, please?
Mr. O'Neil, may we have a date, please? August 6th. August 6th.
Everybody's here on that, right?
Off the record, I don't think it's there.
I am not going to be available on August 6th. I'm gonna be out of town. Alaska.
Okay. We can make that work.
You can make it August 6th, or what?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would have your client here.
I got that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question before you leave. Mr. Brooke Johnson, with this D variance, the approvals of the board, how many do we need?
We need five.
We need five to approve this application?
Five, four in votes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Did you ask for a grant of extension?
Yes.
Yes, August 6th.
Okay.
You say August 9th?
August 6th.
August 6th. Application 2501, Family Adventures Parsippany LLC, 808 Route 46, Block 698, Lot 15.2, Zone B-1, C variance to construct signage. Good evening, Mr. O'Neil.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph O'Neill. Here, Apollo O'Neill, here on behalf of the applicant, Family Adventures LLC. This is a application for signage in a shopping center we have been before you before a number of times. We were here for the original Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, the Home Depot, and a number of other uses, all requiring dimensional variances for their signs because of the layout of the shopping center, which is, to say the least, very vast. Far away from everything when you enter the shopping center, which is why we're going for these dimensional variances.
Sorry to interrupt. I think I have to recuse myself.
Is that Arlington Plaza?
I think it's the Wells.
Yes, it is the Wells.
I'm out.
You're out.
Okay.
You're out.
Good luck.
You have enough.
You only need four.
Yeah.
Good night, Mr. Johnson.
Good night. These dimensional variances, I have with you someone to detail that.
Raise your right hand, please. Swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth. Wait, can you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Thomas Schneider, S-C-H-N-D-I-T-E-R.
Thank you. You can have a seat.
Oh, did you? Joseph Schneider, you were for, I think it's the sign.
Forge Sign Works?
You were primarily responsible for the design of this sign?
Correct.
So can you just very briefly describe for us what we're asking?
Thank you, sir. So Urban Air is occupying the location in the westernmost building. The Urban Air is a national chain. They have multiple locations. They're an indoor adventure park for children. Basically, they have, you know, trampolines, that type of thing. They are occupying what I believe was formerly Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, which has been subdivided into, I guess, there's a Marshalls and Home Goods to the right and Urban Air is occupying the other half of that, or Kmart, sorry, Kmart. The dimensions of the sign on the storefront are basically, specifically overall, it is 27 feet wide. The overall height is, I think it's 180. It comes out to be a total area of, let's see here, 180 square feet. So the capital, I'm sorry, the Urban Air letters are 54 inches in height. The Adventure Park are 18 inches in height and the logo is 84 inches in height. That is basically a lockup of their standard logo that they use, you know, nationally at their various locations. It is well under what would be permitted if it was just a square footage amount. It's more about the proportions of the sign rather than the overall square footage of it.
The percentages are too high, right?
Well, the, the overall, it's really more the overall height of the sign. So above grade, the top of this sign may not be any higher than 25 feet. If you look at the facade, the way that it's laid out, it's centered in the facade itself. The top of the hat, you know, the actual logo itself goes above that 25-foot height. So it's, that's one of the variances that we require is based upon specifically the, you know, the layout of the sign, the way that it's stacked and made out there.
Are you gonna run through all of the variants you need, variances you need?
Do you think you would wanna do that not to discuss them if you'd like, or?
I just wanna make sure the record is clear as to exactly what you need.
Won't they, I'd pay part of the reports? Is it necessary or not?
No.
I, I, this quick side conversation, probably don't have to go through them all because the board has the list in front of them.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
Isn't there zoning reports?
No, no.
No.
Sorry, Mr. O'Neil.
So, I mean, I can tell you that there are basically two, there are two variances that we need to, we need really from. One of them is the overall square footage of the sign because there is a maximum limitation in town of 150, 50 square feet. However, if you utilize a frontage methodology, which is typically used to determine up to that maximum.
We're just identifying, fair.
Okay, so that is one of them. The second one.
Mr. O'Neil, if you look at your statement of the application that you attached to your application. I just wanna make sure that's all of them, so we don't miss anything.
Yes, that is, my statement of application, I'm detailing the C variances, which are the C variances. That's the sign area we just talked about. 248 square feet or 22 square feet is allowed.
Okay.
Total front sign area, 288 square feet or 150 square feet is allowed. The sign is gonna be proposed at 50 square feet from ground level, 25 feet is allowed.
So those are the.
Those are the variances.
Those are the only three variances that you need?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So in addressing, if you have, you have page number, hold on a minute, sorry. Page number six shows you the front elevation of the storefront. It does also indicate and show you the, you know, it shows you the calculations that are required to determine the square footages. This town utilizes what's called the smallest rectangle calculations, which means it's the smallest box or rectangle you could draw around the sign itself. If you look at the specific layout of the Urban Air, if you were to draw a rectangle around, let's for example, the Urban Air Adventure Park letters and then separately segregate the logo, it would be within that. There's a lot of white space if you look at the logo itself because the upper left and right side of the logo, it's basically open space. It's not the sign itself. So, again, if we were to utilize just the linear footage of the building, which is typically a way that you would measure the signage, which it is here, which is, you're allowed to have one and a half square feet per linear foot, up to a maximum of 150. So we are over that maximum specifically because of a limitation of 150. It's a, it's an arbitrary number based upon just that amount. So if you look at the shopping center, there are, you know, many other signs are much larger than that. You have a Home Depot there. You have, you know, Marshalls, which essentially are, you know, have done the same thing. They have a larger storefront. They have a. They have a larger storefront, they have a larger sign, because it typically, if you have a smaller sign on a larger storefront, it just kinda looks, starts to look smaller and smaller. Um, the hat, or the, if you look at the logo, the, his name is Ervey, that's his name, um, the hat extends above the 25-foot limitation, so it's, basically if you draw a line through Ervey's head, that would be where you would have to stop putting the sign. So, the, the facade of the, of the storefront, as you can see, is built up, uh, to, you know, to show you that it's, uh, an entryway to the actual property. The sign itself is centered within that facade, so I think aesthetically, it, you know, it certainly doesn't look out of place. This storefront actually extends another, uh, 200 feet, uh, to the right, so it's a very large storefront. We're just showing you the section where you enter the actual location itself in this elevation.
On page seven?
Yes.
Which I think is the one, the page you were just referring to, right?
Uh, it's six in my package here.
Six, six.
This page here?
Yeah, on page seven, the top of the hat is showing us 30 feet, 7 inches in elevation.
Uh, to the top of it, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so you're asking for that 30 feet, 7 inches, not the 50 feet?
Uh, yes, you know what, that may have been a typo or something, that's correct. Correct, yes, but if you, you actually see that in that scene, you see where the 25 feet is like drawing through his head, so that is correct, you are right, sir. That is correct. Aside from that, I mean, we have other photographs that, you know, or other signs in the shopping center, um, you know, it doesn't really look out of place, there's a lot of much larger signs in the shopping center. This storefront is set very far back, as you enter into that shopping center, there's a central driveway that brings you in, it kinda brings you to the middle of a U-shaped, uh, you know, the U-shaped construct there, so it's set back very far. Uh, these are 54-inch letters that read Urban Air, uh, those are read from about, you know, 540 feet away, which is roughly, you know, the various setbacks, it really is appropriate for that. I mean, there's a Shoprite sign there that those letters are probably about 10 feet tall. Um, again, we, we designed this with respect to other signs that were within the shopping center, and based upon our clients', you know, criteria that they have from, you know, their branding standpoint.
I do have to amend what I said about the variances looking across the table here. That green is neon green, and it's actually not permitted by your sign ordinance, which regulates colors, so I would request a variance for that green, I think just that the minimalist amount of that green is not gonna cause a hazard, which would be the reason why your ordinances normally try to regulate away from neon colors, very bright colors, they don't want people becoming confused by the size of their emergency sign.
And this color is called lime green?
Yeah, it's called lime.
It's a neon, okay.
There's a Pantone number associated with it, which is a printing number, uh, it's 388C. I mean, everything, just 'cause you see something printed here doesn't mean it's exactly gonna match, obviously.
Why is this color chosen?
I'm sorry?
Why is this color chosen?
That's their national branding. I, again, it's, the color that's represented here is pretty close to what it looks like. It's not really, it's not really a brilliant green, it's not like a, it's not like, when you say neon, you know, again, these are descriptive words for colors, that's why we utilize a numbering system for different records, you know, the Sherwin-Williams or various ways of, you know, color spectrum.
So, the green, green color is the corporate color?
Correct, that is correct, yes, correct.
Oh, I don't have six either.
I don't have page six.
Yeah, we don't have page six.
And that's the one that shows the actual dimensions, right?
I have five and then seven.
I don't think I have the same package, I think I just have our original drawings here.
Yep, sorry about that.
Oh, that's, that's, okay, that has a cover sheet on it, that's why it's one page off, yes.
We got page five.
Yeah, that is, you know, you're just great.
Why don't we mark that, we're gonna mark that as...
Yes, this actually had a cover sheet added to it and recorded the count, town party.
I just wanna make sure that I have the sheet.
Yeah, that's fine. That's correct. This was our original shop drawings, which were then, again, re-numbered in to put into here, so correct.
I just wanna make sure I have the sheet that you were referring to, that had the actual...
You do, that's why it was only one page off, it's the same, yeah, same pages, yes.
Well, we've marked that.
So is our, is our page seven?
Yes, correct.
This page right here?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so that's got the dimensions for which you need the variances?
Yes.
Gotcha.
They don't match.
Yeah, they don't, they, they, they don't match your, your statement, so...
All right, so, I mean, recap.
We straightened out the 50 versus 30.
We straightened out the 50 versus the 30.
Yeah.
What is the, what is the sign area?
So the actual sign area of the, the total sign, when you draw the smallest rectangle around it, is 210 square feet.
Okay, 210, where...
Pointing out the two...
Or 210.5, it looks like on your, is that correct?
But boxing out the components of the sign, how, what is the area?
That's, if you look at the top of it, that actually tells you what they are. You have 180 and you have 68, so that's the 200, uh, what is that, 2, it comes out to the 248. 248.
Which is the original thing I said.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Oh, yes.
So it is 248.
Yes.
Where 22 is permitted.
Well, up to 150, I believe, is the...
Oh, it's 150.
150 is the maximum.
Total front area is...
When you get 22...
150 is the...
Right here. This, what joke?
I wonder where he got that.
I think it's two. I think it's two.
The total front sign area is 150 square feet permitted, the total.
Right, so it's, there's a cap. So typically what happens is if you have a 50-foot-long storefront, you take that number, you multiply it by 1.5, and that would give you what you'd be permitted to do, uh, to, you know, to draw for signage. However, this storefront is actually 207 feet wide, if you do that multiplication, you get to 210 square feet, but there is a maximum ceiling of 150, which is set here in the town.
Where's the, where's the 22 come from?
I don't know, that might be for, uh, a different, a different zone, I'm not sure.
Is this the only sign you're gonna have?
Yeah, this is it. This, so there's a, well, there's a pylon sign, we're just putting new lenses in.
Yeah, so you need 248 square feet where 210 is permitted?
Well, 150 is the maximum. Yes, correct, that's correct.
248 for the whole sign.
Yes.
Where 150 is permitted. You need the 30 feet, 7 inches, where 25 is permitted in terms of the height, and you need the lime green color.
Right. Yes.
Those three variances.
That's it.
Okay.
Now we're, sorry, now it's sad.
I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page and I write the resolution.
I appreciate that, that's great.
Is there anything else, Mr. O'Neill?
This, this number three is different.
That's correct, that is not, that is not...
Do we have any questions of the board, of the testimony given by this gentleman?
Yeah, my question, do you know how big the sign, do you know how big the Marshall and the Home Goods signs are?
I did do some measurements on them, um, the Marshall's letters are, I think they were six feet tall. Uh, let's see here, hold on a minute.
Well, the difference is, he's getting those measurements, is Marshall's and Home Goods don't have a character ID for a corporate logo.
I understand that, I'm just...
True, and they're much narrower storefronts, too, actually.
I'm trying to compare the letter, letters to letters.
So, I mean, the Shoprite letters, I had measured them out, those were eight feet tall. Um, and again, the home, you know, depending on how they're, they're formatted and stacked, so the Shoprite has very large block letters, just say Shoprite across the storefront. Marshall's and Home Goods, those storefronts are less than half of the width of this storefront, and those letters are six feet tall, but again, the crux of the matter here is that it just says Marshall's, it doesn't have, you know, the Ervey logo on the top of it like these guys have.
And the sign is only gonna be in the area that's colored.
Correct.
Which is there now.
Yes, that is correct. It's the, they built up a, I guess, the, you know, the actual, like, stucco storefront in that area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that you have Marshall's and Home Goods and, and Urban Air on the same side of the shopping center.
Right.
The lettering should be like...
They are, okay, so to your point, yes, they're all within what you would call the sign band, which is established for all the storefronts. So you have a sign band here for Urban Air, then you have a lower brick facade, and then it's built up again for Marshall's...
A different direction, really, so...
Correct, but I'm saying even the two that are adjacent, those have a built-up storefront as well, and it's in the same, you know, they're in the same horizontal plane, in the same, you call it the sign band, if you will.
So the letters are, are the same size range?
Yes, the letters are, in fact, the Urban Air letters are actually smaller, but the overall sign height is greater, yeah.